Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock, October 16th, regular meeting in the City Council. Call me in your order and entertain the roll call.
Go for it.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Rothie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
The ones accounted for, welcome back, Mr. Walker.
Kengis.
Kengis, yeah, he skipped over Kengis.
Present.
Yeah, you did. I thought I'd misheard you, but... He's here.
I apologize.
All right, welcome back, Mr. Walker. Thanks for joining us again. Item C or Section C, pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Section D is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to do so.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinko, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Section E is the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion to do so.
I'll move approval of the October 2nd, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Drinko. Counsel discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Public hearing, item number one. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to review and approve the Waverly Public Library Building Edition and Renovation Project Plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Well, we received any written or oral comments, Carl?
We have not, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Any comments from anyone in the public this evening on this matter? Seeing no one rise, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-143, a resolution approving the Waverly Public Library Building Edition and Renovation Project Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated costs.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Kengis. Counsel discussion. For the record, Director Sarah is here, and also Board Representative McHugh is here. Deanna.
Just a couple of updates. Last, well, the week before last, I guess it was, Deanna McHugh and I went to Des Moines to speak to the Community Attraction and Tourism Board, the Hance Iowa Board, and they approved us for a $375,000 grant. So that was a big boost to our fundraising. And also tomorrow is the bid opening. That date had originally been set for the 10th, but we request, or we received requests from numerous contractors to have additional time, to have their subcontractors come in, and so that date is tomorrow.
I suppose my only question is, on the source of funds, they don't actually add up to the right amount?
Yes, there should have been an additional $20,000 added to the private gifts section. It should be $1,577,500.
Thank you.
So is the private, is the foundation's gift under private gifts?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the total of the foundation's?
At this time, right now, the foundation has pledged $500,000 to go toward the project.
Okay. I was on the understanding that there would be $700,000 from the city foundation.
It's still a possibility that there will be some more coming from the foundation, depending on how our fundraising goes going forward.
Can you go more depth about depending on how our fundraising goes?
Well, we have, our CAT grant requires us to raise an additional $180,000 in the next four months, and so depending on how that goes, we may be looking to the foundation to help with a little bit more funding.
So exactly to your question, Heather, in the original presentations, we had, the foundation had said up to $700,000, as we were looking at the various sources of funds, and that was going to depend on how private fundraising went. And so as we got into some of the grant submissions, we had to have a firm number from the foundation, not just an "up to," and so we set that at 500, knowing that there was still flexibility within the foundation to go up to 700 if needed, based on the other fundraising activities that, and progress that we would make towards that goal.
So the firm number is 500?
Yeah, that's the pledged amount, but there is still that flexibility of two 700.
So it won't go down?
Correct.
Okay.
So is that $500,000 partly money that has been raised in the last year, or is that money that the foundation has in their savings, so to speak?
A little bit of both, but it is primarily in their savings. It's past gifts that were made to the library and that have been held for whatever big projects come along that the foundation wants to support. Certainly, there are gifts that have happened in the last year that weren't earmarked for the building campaign, and then those go into the foundation as well. So that money is primarily past gifts to the library.
And what amount of money have you raised in the last year with the make room for renewal? Where are you at right now?
We're just shy of $1 million, and that's separate from the $500,000 pledged by the foundation from past gifts. So new private donations were around $1 million, just underneath.
And the $695,000 under grants here, does that include the most recent $375,000?
That does include the $375,000, yes.
I just want to make sure that people who might be listening understand that the city's commitment is $700,000, and we're not going to be able to go over that if there is a shortfall of some kind, and I'm not saying that there will be, but if there is, that's something the library's fundraising activities are going to have to make up, because for us to go over $700,000 would be rather...
If possible.
...practically difficult.
I think we can.
You legally can.
You can.
We really can. We totally can't without going about it entirely different way than what we have, so...
And to that exact point, you know, as we've talked from a fundraising committee perspective, we do have several major gift donors that are kind of in process, if you will, and a number of grassroots fundraising activities over the next few months that we're going to be pursuing to try and increase that amount. A little bit of grants that we're still looking at as well. In the bidding process, we also built in alternates that gave us some flexibility, and then we have the foundation flexibility as well. So, you know, we'll work kind of both ends of the equation, knowing that the city is at that $700,000 cap.
And so what's your current fundraising goal? Because I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, I'm glad it's going so well, but you'd said in a previous presentation that you had exceeded your goal, but now I notice that you're still fundraising and going to the library, and I noticed that.
It's a perfect question.
So did the bar move, or what happened to the goal?
Bar moved, yes. We, well, go ahead.
When we applied for the CAT grant, one of the first things they asked us to do was get an updated opinion of cost, because so many of their projects had been coming in high. And so we did that, and it changed, it changed the number that was the goal. And so at that point...
Yep, so I think if you remember those very initial presentations to you guys, we were at a total goal of 2.4 million, and kind of breaking out the funding sources based on that, and we exceeded that goal prior to going for the CAT grant and getting that updated opinion. And that new opinion raised our costs up into the neighborhood of $3 million. So that's the new goal, and again, we're at 2.8 roughly, 2.82 in total funds raised to date. So, yeah, that's all kind of recent information, and an article on that is actually going to get published in the paper here hopefully this week, so...
I think once you see bid openings tomorrow, you'll have a much better sense of where things are at. If they're below par, if they're above, you'll have to reset or go forward also. You're going to see it as you continue through. There's contingency built in for construction, there's contingency built in for architect fees. All that stuff is to try and cushion this so you don't come up very short. So our goal will be, when we look at the bids that they come in, to try and gauge, where is that trend happening? Are we hitting where we thought? Are we way up or way down? And then you'll have to pivot and kind of see what happens from that point. But tomorrow will be very important to see what those figures come in.
Absolutely right. And like I said, we've got that flexibility kind of both ways, where we're still trying to raise additional funds, but if we need to relook based on the alternates that are built into the bid to reduce the cost, we have some flexibility there, too.
You mentioned you have some alternates built in, and I did, through the almost 900 pages of stuff, read a couple of them, like bathroom entry or something like that. So are these going to be, will that affect the accessibility, you know, for like wheelchair or, you know, stuff like that, or?
Right now, it's technically accessible. We're trying to make it even more accessible. The bathrooms are listed as an alternate, but we hope we won't have to cut that one. There are some other alternates that would probably be first.
I think that was one of my biggest concerns, is these are the alternates, and I think these were the bigger things that, you know, we wanted to make it more accessible for everyone, and yes, it might be already accessible, but we wanted to upgrade or update to that. So, you know, I guess that was a big concern.
No, just like you said, Sarah, that some of the other alternates that are in there, some lighting things, some of the refresh of the exterior and some of those things, those would be the first things that we would look at, and the bathrooms, I think, would be the last.
Anything further?
Have we had our city engineer look at these drawings?
I've been, I've been talking to Mike on and off. He's provided some help with just preparing, or getting documents ready for this meeting, but I don't know.
I know we have a city engineer, so it's kind of one of the things that they're good for.
I'm not an architect. If it deals with a curtain lock, great.
Okay.
If it has to do with circulation dust, no.
Anything else?
I guess I just wanted to commend you for your thoroughness. There's, I couldn't find anything that I wished was in the 909 pages. It wasn't. Thank you for that.
Architects are a job. Yes.
All right, hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent. The Resolution 23-143 is approved. Leads us to Section G, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do you have any comments of five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer? All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole, not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? Pete?
Name's Pete Lampy. I'm here tonight as the current chair of the Waverly Board of Adjustments. We've been short one member since July. I know I've had numerous contacts trying to recruit every other member. The other three members that are active have all had contacts, but we still haven't got anybody convinced, and we'd like to make a call if anyone is interested. It's one Monday night a month that the meetings are, and we don't have a meeting every month. If you want to contact Paige Yoder, she's the zoning administrator, or Carla could help you out with any questions, or they can refer you to me, and I can, I've been a longtime member, and I can explain things to what's going on. But if you know of anybody that might be interested, or if there's anybody looking on, please contact us.
Are you still wanting a female?
Yes, actually, it's, we've got three male members, and there's only one woman right now. I think we're almost getting to the point in the code, the state code, that we've been long enough without that we could actually fill it with another man. But I would, as a longtime member, I like to have another female opinion, so, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing nobody rise, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. The following items will be activated by voice, followed on a single motion, without separate discussion unless someone from the council public requested a specific item be considered separately. Item one, pay request from Studio Lee Lee for the Waverly Public Library Edition and Renovation for $13,716.50. Item two is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Baskin's Creek Trail Bridge Replacement for the amount of $4,801.39. Item three is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Waverly Bridge Inspection 2023 for the amount of $1,491.92. Item four is a pay request from Midwest Concrete Incorporated for the Waverly Municipal Airport Reconstruct South Tea Hanger Taxi Lane for the amount of $190,003.22. Item five is a pay request from Wicks Construction for Waverly Municipal Airport Connect Taxiway Connector for the amount of $142,103.62. Item six is a Class E Retail Alcohol License Application for the Beach House. Item seven is a Class E Retail Alcohol License Application for Red Fox Inn. And item eight is the cash disbursements for September 2023. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. And then regular business, item number one, Resolution 23-145, accepting the Elm Street and 29th Avenue Southwest/Southeast Water Main Loops Project as complete and approving change order number one and pay estimate number three as the final payment. Entertain a motion.
Item one?
Item one.
That's what I've got in mind.
You've got the website hosting?
That's, I'll go to the computer. Resolution 23-147, approving the website hosting maintenance agreement with the IFC Studios for the Waverly Welcome Home Website. Let's try that one.
Move approval of Resolution 23-147, Resolution approving a website hosting management agreement with IFC Studios of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for the Waverly Welcome Home Website for the amount of $2,028 per year. That's $169 per month.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Myers. Counsel discussion.
Doesn't look like this one's in somebody's basement, so we should be good there.
I think we're good, probably. There's no dot something, dot something, so... Yeah, and I mean, Ambridge was doing this for us. They're kind of getting out of that now, and so this is a good firm that's been doing a lot of this. The price is reasonable compared to where we were paying it, and we really don't have much choice. Somebody's got to host this, so...
It looks, sounds like they're backing it up on a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Should be good there.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 23-147 is approved. Now we'll try Resolution 23-145, accepting the Elm Street and 29th Avenue Southwest/Southeast Water Main Loops Project as complete and approving change order number one and pay estimate number three as the final payment.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-145, a resolution accepting the Elm Street and 29th Avenue Southwest/Southeast Water Main Loops Project as complete and approving change order number one and pay estimate number three as the final payment.
Second.
Moved by Bergen, second by Drinko. Counsel discussion. My personal opinion, this project went fairly quick and was done like that, and so...
Change order was a decrease. I always like to point those out. It doesn't always go up. It was a decrease this time, so...
Good deal. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Vote of seven to zero, Resolution 23-145 is approved. Brings us to Resolution 23-148, approving a bid from Blackhawk Electric of Waterloo, Iowa for the dog park lights. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-148, a resolution approving a bid from Blackhawk Electric of Waterloo, Iowa for dog park lights for $25,725,000. Dog park lights with option two for $27,225, or dog park lights with option one for $28,000.
Second. Pretty good?
It's fine.
Okay, just making sure.
That's how it was bid, so...
Yep, absolutely. Yep, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an option, so... Motion by Rothie, second by Schneider, as read. Counsel discussion.
It sounds like we got to flush out what we need for electrical there.
If pleased, the mayor and council, I wouldn't mind having Garrett come up and kind of walk through the options as to what we're looking at, why they were optioned out, and kind of where we feel we ought to go.
All right, so just a quick rundown. As you can see, if we go with just dog park lights, and when I say dog park lights, I am referring to a light in the parking lot as well. So there would be one light in the parking lot, and then it'd be one post with four lights off in the dog park. This light would not illuminate the whole dog park, obviously, but a nice section of it, pretty much inside that middle part of where the sidewalk is. When we bid this out, we decided to do a couple of options for electrical, added electrical, which would be posts by the gates. What these would be for is, and I apologize for how it's kind of written out with the option two first and then option one, but option two is for two 20 amp, 120 volt plugs. Basically, what that would give us is some of your smaller equipment. As of, for instance, we have a sound system out there for the Easter egg hunt. We can plug that in now. Currently, we cannot do that. Some of your smaller stuff like that is what that comes down to. If we looked at option number one, that's where we have the, just wanted to make sure I read it right here, 120 amp, 120 volt, 150 amp, 240 volt, 130 amp, 120 volt, and then one blank space on that. That would give us power for whatever we wanted to use out there, anytime in the future. Right now, we have a couple of different events out there, as I mentioned, the dog Easter egg hunt, we have doodle fest, there's a couple of other groups that have contacted me about having gatherings out there. Those have not come to fruition yet, but I do believe that they will as we move forward. Pie in the sky, if we ever have a ragbri come through Waverly again, it's very possible that something could be hosted out there. Lot of green space. So things like that, that option number one would give us any power that we need for anything future down the road. We could always add that, but right now, if we looked to add it, you know, you're looking at $2,300 over what the base bid is. In the future, it would, if we added it in the future because we needed to, it'd be well above that. I will mention, we're running into those problems already at, when I say already, it's been kind of an ongoing problem. At Coleman at the amphitheater, we've had to add more power there, because we just don't have enough to power what people need for their events. So that is why the bids went out like that. I guess that's what we get to decide on tonight.
Is there any, would there be any impact if conversations about pickleball courts happening in that part of town, if those develop further? Is this more isolated to just the dog park space, or would that have any impact on future use?
It would have or could have impact on that. At this point, it does not look like anywhere on the soccer complex is going to be a real viable option for pickleball. But let's say down the road that that changed and that that did happen, yes, we could run power right from there over to pickleball to have lights for pickleball.
Would that be the case with all the options?
Just option number one.
So any ideas about how to come up with the $5,500? That's the difference between the funds that you have listed and the 28? Any great ideas about that?
No real great ideas.
We will cover from capital improvement fund as well, if need be. If there's any other grants or donations that come in, it'll offset that, but right now, the plan would be if you move forward to pull the remaining funds from capital improvement funds, same as where the original was budgeted, because we didn't really have that either, so it would just add to that balance.
Okay.
And I do want to add, I mean, I'm sure everyone saw it there, we did get a grant for $2,424 from the foundation as well, so that's at least helping towards it.
So in the list of alternatives, there's of course, you know, install, do not, do not install, but one of them is do not accept the bid and rebid in the spring. So we only got one bid on this. Do we have any reason to think that if we rebid this in the spring, we might get more bids?
I mean, it's always possible. I guess I don't really have any reason to believe that we will, but it's always possible, and obviously, if we were to get more, you know, we at least have a choice.
I don't know if the costs are going to be any better in the spring.
Well, I don't know if the costs are going to be, but I suppose if we had, I suppose...
More bids.
Yeah, I always feel better if they're all high, getting a high one than if I just have one high. I mean, I don't know if this, the one bid that we got was someone who wasn't serious and was just throwing out a high bid in hopes of getting it, or if that's really what the cost is. And when I only have one, I don't know that.
I personally like to think that knowing that there's, there are the potential of three local or more local bidders that could have come to the table, that they were trying to be competitive in nature.
And I will point out, the estimates that we got originally were right in that $22,000 to $23,000 range. That's why we went and got the grant, because we were just kind of hoping to cover, you know, that difference, yes.
It's not a huge project. I think as some of what you're seeing as well, this is a nice add-on project, so you're not going to get a real competitive bid for something like this, but the size as well. So a lot of the individuals you look at, there's a lot of work out there right now for electricians, especially in this area. And so to get this as an add-on, you're going to pay a little bit of a premium, but it really wasn't as bad as I thought it could have been.
Right.
So I don't know that bidding in the spring, when construction kicks in again, is going to net us anything better. And so, to get this as an add-on, you're going to pay a little bit of a premium, but it really wasn't as bad as I thought it could have been.
Right.
So I don't know that bidding in the spring, when construction kicks in again, is going to net us anything better. I always prefer bird in the hand. I know exactly what this is. If the spring comes and it's thirty, well, now what are we going to do? Do we push it off another year because we didn't like that bid? We can maneuver this, we have the funding if we need it, and I think my recommendation would be that we move forward and take what we know versus what we don't know.
There's a time cost here, too. That's six months of use that we can get out of it before then. Well, maybe four months with January and February, but...
Just anecdotally, I know from my business that I don't know any electricians that aren't just swamped right now. And as soon as I looked at this, that was my assumption, is that they're so busy, they didn't have time to do it or have a need to do it.
Well, I believe that the three local electricians that we have on this list were all, at least, interested in bidding on the library project, so it's possible that they're looking at being even more busy. So if given a choice between working on the library and working on the dog park, they may be putting their effort more towards the library project.
I'd like to just point out, too, that if you do wait till the spring, you might get some of those other people, but if you don't change the actual project or the base of what you're asking for, you run the risk of losing one person who did bid, because now their numbers kind of already know.
Right.
That's a good point.
Well, on the electrical, I guess my thoughts would be that we have existing needs for some electrical, and that would make sense to me to pursue that, but maybe not go with option one, which is the highest one. And I don't know if it makes sense to build that out all that far.
And I don't necessarily disagree, but for what we would get for that extra seven hundred dollars, it makes a lot more sense to get that power.
To get it done now, to do it now.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the option two doesn't seem to make that much sense to me. I suppose it would be either option one or the base package, but the option two doesn't seem to be a good use of funds.
I do know that if there's any skepticism of the particular bidder, Blackhawk Electric has done some substantial work for Whortburg under a very competitive bid, so as far as being known.
And Blackhawk Electric was one of the companies that gave us our estimate and so on, so...
So do we need to narrow it down to vote on this? Make an amendment, or...
Choose a...
For which option, yeah.
Okay, so, do I do that via an amendment? Or what's the best way to do that?
Your motion, so you could friendly amend your...
Yeah.
I'll friendly amend the motion to...so that we would vote on option one.
At twenty-eight thousand dollars.
At twenty-eight thousand dollars.
So, the, back to her original motion.
It was you, wasn't it?
Ma'am.
Do you second that?
I'll second hers, that's...
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion now that we are narrowed to the project with the option one at twenty-eight thousand dollars?
All I can say is that I know any project I've ever been associated with that was dealing with electrical outlets, the more electrical outlets you can have, the better. You think you're never going to use them, because you will. And I think that we want to make that space as flexible and as usable as we possibly can, so I would endorse option one.
I just look at, you know, some of the bigger picture things. If we have a disaster event and you need electrical hookup, you may have an area town that is, you know, been impacted. Here's something that's kind of out there that you could run a command post, plug into. That's kind of where my mind goes with the fire department, ambulance services, that kind of thing. So, right down the hill from our treatment plant, so a lot of different things could happen there, just saying. So more of these outlets that we have scattered around and throughout the community, the better for those types of situations. You talk about ragbri, those types of things, so that's good, in my opinion, but I'm not a voter. Anything further?
You'd have a bring your dog to the concert in the dog park event.
That's right.
We can have karaoke for you.
Yes, dog karaoke.
That's right. Roll call Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote seven to zero, Resolution twenty-three dash one forty-eight is approved. Thank you, Garrett, for your assistance. Item four is Resolution twenty-three dash one forty-nine, approving the construction plans and guarantees for the installation of public infrastructures by developers. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution twenty-three dash one forty-nine, approving the construction plans and guarantees for the installation of public infrastructures by developers, Bremer County Fair Association.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Go for it.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote seven to zero, Resolution twenty-three dash one forty-nine is approved. Brings us to reports from boards and commissions. Item one is Waverly Municipal Airport Commission minutes of August tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Item two is City of Waverly Monthly Financial Report of September twenty-twenty-three. Item three is the Waverly Senior Center Calendar of October twenty-twenty-three. All received into the record. Brings us to staff updates. Mr. Browner?
We have a brief update tonight, sir.
Yes, sir. You might want to bring that one up front.
I suppose I could do that.
There you go.
Don't drop it.
That's right. We only got one.
All right, so, this, last week, the mayor, Bill, and myself attended a luncheon. It was for the Iowa Chapter of American Planning Association, and the City of Waverly and MSA won an award for the best practice award. So, that is what this is showing here. That was for the combined park and open space plan, comprehensive plan, everything that we did together. So, there's the award. We've got one on display in administration, and then there's one on display in mine and bill's office as well. So, feel free to stop by and take a look. And then on a little lesser note, well, maybe more major note, we are starting to turn the water off in all the restrooms and outside facilities, so restrooms will be closed probably within the next week or so. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On the award, I'll just add to that, that, you know, best practice isn't necessarily just the outcome and the product that was turned out, which was fantastic. It goes into the methods that it was developed, and the community involvement, the pop-ups, all of that was part of the evaluation for that award, and what MSA did, and being at, you remember last year's Oktoberfest, being, I think they were at the art walk and other things, so just trying to really engage with the public rather than what do these seven want, and what does Leisure Services Commission want, and what does Planning and Zoning want? It's really getting a pulse of the community, and that's what I see when I see that award. So, I think it's an award to the community for partaking in that process and having an opportunity to do so.
Well, I would say, MSA said they had really good community engagement, which I think speaks well to our community, that they are willing to engage in these sort of planning exercises.
Yes, yep, so...
It's all we have to do, sir.
Thank you. Moving to city council comments with Ms. Myers.
Thursday night is the Chambers, Vines, and Steins event, and if you have an interest in that and haven't gotten your ticket yet, please contact the Chamber office. It'll be a good event.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bergen?
Anyone who wishes to discuss city council business, I will be at the wooden foot afterward.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Drinkow.
Well, I can always tell when Whortburg has a successful event, because all the streets around my house are completely filled with parked cars, and they clearly had a very successful homecoming last weekend. Fortunately, the weather cleared up. Saturday was a beautiful day, and there were just tons of people around. So my congratulations to Whortburg on a very successful homecoming event.
Thank you. Ms. Raffey?
Two things. This Saturday night at seven o'clock, there's a Whortburg Community Symphony Concert at Newman Auditorium. A good friend of mine from high school, John Hagan, is going to be performing, and he now tours the world as a Texas tenor, even though he is not from Texas. But I encourage...
None of them were.
Huh? No, I know. That was marketing. But anyhow, so there are tickets available, so please consider going. I think it's going to be an amazing concert. Also, the Trees Forever program here in Waverly has a tree replacement program happening through November fourth with the cooperation of Teets Nursery. So this is available to anybody who's a Waverly Utilities customer, and you can get up to seventy-five dollars off a tree at Teets to replace one that needed to be removed from your yard. You can get up to two trees rebated per address, and there's information on the Trees Forever Facebook page, or probably on the Leisure Services page, too. So I'd encourage people to take advantage of that. The program funds up to thirty rebates, and I think as of our meeting last week, only about a half a dozen had been used, so there's funds available. So please take advantage of that.
Excellent. Ms. Raffey?
I just want to mention some of this past weekend's events. You know, we had Whortburg, and we were able to attend that Whortburg homecoming. That was awesome. My family enjoyed the parade that they had and the Renaissance Fair that they had, and engaging with some of the students that were out and about selling some things, so... And then the library also had a haunted house, and a lot of middle schoolers absolutely are raving about it. You've got to go, you've got to go. So that was pretty awesome as well. And then the fire department had an open house, and there was a lot of tenants there, too. So it was good to see all the community engagements and variety of different things going on over the weekend, so I was thankful to be able to bring my family and attend some of those things going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
I was very excited to see that Whortburg was able to get their fountain up and running.
I can attest, it will take a small tank to damage that, so personally, we'll put out that mission to all the students to try.
I was going to say, if you try. Yeah. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kangas?
Nothing.
All right. I've got just two things. As some of you may know, we had a small entourage of ten folks over from Eisenach, James and Bill on Wednesday, and I can't remember who else all was there, but anyway, Sarah was there. But anyway, welcomed them to our community. They were in town the rest of the day that day. Thursday, they toured UEA and GMT and the brewery, of course, but the coffee roasters. And then Thursday, they were up in Pivo at the brewery up there and a couple of places. Saturday, they partook in the whole entourage of homecoming. And then Sunday night, hosted it, last night at Brunkhorst, is a farewell thing, a great event to connect with them, so they'll be back in ten years or sooner, but that's kind of the schedule. The last thing I have is city and school and hospital board elections. Early voting will start on Wednesday at the courthouse, so you can swing up there and cast your ballot and get it taken care of and be done with it. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn?
Motion by Kangas, second by Schneider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in the same, we adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.